So we're gonna go ahead and get started in the interest of time. I don't want to hold anyone up. I guess TJ, we could start with your memo that you put together. And then I'll ask some more specific questions and then we'll go around and see what other questions or comments folks have. I want to welcome Tiffany Alicia to this conversation. She's been doing some work in the community helping folks fill out their ARPA fund applications. Definitely brought some concerns to me and I and I agree with them, but she can express them more eloquently than I can. And so I wanted her to come. In order to do that, Councilman Letterman, welcome. So we will go ahead and get started. TJ, did you want to control the screen?
I don't know if you need to make me a whole.
Sorry, guys. You have it now, TJ. Okay.
So well, out of the gate, I just wanna start off the new year. Right, the new term, new year, I guess. For I know Madam Chair, you're gonna be having meetings, I think, every other week or so roughly. Every other week, ARPA spending and ARPA in general. I want to make sure that to let you know that someone from the office, it may not always be me, it might always be Lindsay, it may not always be Tim or Tom, excuse me, or Che, but we'll do our best efforts to have someone at every one of those meetings that can hopefully answer questions. You know, just, I know, I can't always, I can't always make it sometimes. Schedules don't allow, but I'll make sure that we have, I'll let you know who can be in attendance at any given time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
In addition, we met internally and decided that a year-to-date budget report is something that, or memo summarizing the year-to-date budget report is something that makes a lot of sense for us to communicate to the city council. And so I'm committing to do this every month for as long as we're spending ARPA funds. In addition, I would be looking to, like I mentioned earlier today, I'll also be doing memos for the bigger projects and/or concepts, expenditures, whatever it may be, that similar to the Build Back Better memo that went out, just so, you know, we're allocating fifteen million dollars to a new program. You, as a city council, should be well-informed about its intent and its usage. So that's my commitment out of the gate to, to the city council as it relates to ARPA and virtually almost everything else that we do. So.
Okay.
That said, you know, here's the memo, and I can get many copies available for folks if they need it, or email it out, you know. As we know, we were rewarded one hundred twenty-three point eight billion dollars of recovery money from the pandemic. And what you'll see is, you'll just see this chart kind of being updated, and we have more details that go behind it. And we can, we can share that if and when you want it or need it. And I'll just go through it. So we have the category of spend. You'll notice that the other financing use revenue shortfall, that's twelve million dollars. That is the loss revenue calculation for specifically for the city of Springfield that we're allowed to build into the budget as, as loss revenue. We have salaries and wages, that is for the staff, that staff, the ARPA office. The premium pay merit bonuses, that is the final number as it stands today of what went out to all the city side and the two school unions for the merit pay for our employees that were near and involved in the day-to-day work of recovery of the pandemic. We have professional services, only sixty dollars, that's for trans- translational services. We've encumbered seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars for similar purpose. Property acquisition, that was the initial three million dollars or three point five million dollars set aside to acquire Colonial Block. And I believe if you haven't, if you haven't had a memo shared with you, we could put one together explaining that the the reasoning and kind of why we're doing, why we did that.
Can you do that, please? Because I don't remember having those details.
Yeah, so I'll make sure that we have a memo that, so what we're doing as an office is drafting kind of memos as we make awards to tie it back to the final rule. And to make sure that we, when three years from now, two years from now, we're audited, we have a a record in place as to what our thinking was and linking it to the recovery from the pandemic. And then the final piece is the first five awards of nonprofit and small business assistance. I probably should update that column to reflect that this is not just nonprofit, this is more small business, but I apologize for that, but that's the two hundred fifty-four thousand. That is in the obligated column because we're still working out the terms and conditions of the grant contracts that they're going to be receiving. And all of what I just said is also contained in writing here as well. So my commitment to this group and to the city council in the whole is to provide this every month as long, as well as backup for any other major decisions that are on the horizon or gonna be underway.
Okay, that sounds good. Can you go back down to the box for me, TJ? With all the expenditures and incumbents. For the salary and wages line, you didn't encumber more funds for the salaries?
We have not. That is just what's hitting against the budget or the number that we have and what was being expended to date. We could put together an overall budget number.
So can I say something about that?
Sure.
Um, I wanted to make a note about that. That's not inclusive of everything right now, Tracy, because we have some employees that we're gonna have to reclass their salaries over because we weren't sure what percentage they were gonna be working on ARPA. So in addition, in addition to that, we're gonna have Che's unit that isn't gonna be potentially a hundred percent on ARPA all the time, so that will have to be reclassed at some point, too. So I just want to say that that number, sometimes you might see a jump and it'll be related to those reclasses once we get that figured out.
So it's gonna be Che's unit. How many employees are we thinking there?
So what we're thinking now in terms of employees, we have well, Che's unit is gonna be Che, a senior compliance project manager and a compliance project manager or two under Che's unit. So we're about to post a project compliance manager, program manager for compliance, project manager for compliance, I don't know the exact title. We prefer bilingual, so we can have at least one person that's going out on site and doing trainings to have Spanish-speaking ability. So but we can't make it a bona fide credential, we have to make it a preferred. But if we get a good pool of candidates, we may want to try to pull two because that's really where the rubber meets the road in terms of getting our small businesses, our housing assistance and all that is getting out to the public. And between Che, we're in the process of making an offer to the senior and then possibly two other project managers.
And what about Tom's department?
Right now, Tom has him, Vanessa Lima as a senior analyst and Samajit Saha as an analyst, and that, we don't know if we're adding more to that. We know that there's gonna be a, I'll say a tsunami, but we know there's gonna be a huge influx of workload and contract management and all that stuff. And so we want to kind of keep an eye on how do we best manage that workload and that, you know, the number of contracts. So our residents and businesses aren't waiting in a lot, a longer time than they need to to get the grants into their hands.
So what I would like to see is a more real-world number on the salary and wages line. Maybe in the obligated field and then also a line that shows us what the balance is.
Yeah, so the reason you don't have that yet is I don't have a full budget and accounting for the staff needs. And that, we could put something together for the February, for the February meeting and have it because by then we will know the salary or the percentage most likely of the salary for the senior and then hopefully we'll be well underway with the two project managers. And once we know that, we can put the appropriate budget in.
And for the premium pay merit pay, are we up to date? What's happening there?
That is, as it stands now, unless we have conversations, otherwise, this is, this is, we're done, our program is closed and we're not doing any more premium pay or merit bonuses.
All right. I thought the number for the property acquisition was two point five, but it was always three point five?
So, well, the numbers I was given in the back of my mind is, was three million for acquisition and then some carrying costs for about half a million. This reflects the updated figures that we received from economic development for maintaining the buildings while they're under our care.
They were commercial buildings?
Yeah, there were the three commercial buildings on State Street known as Colonial Block.
That's State Street. Okay, I did see your hand, Councilor Hurst. I'll get to you in one moment. So just for clarification, the Build Back Better Springfield funds could be used to acquire and refurbish those buildings?
Could be. So this, this is a program that's gonna be administered by Tim Sheen and Economic Development where it's adaptive reuse policy for old commercial buildings that we want to bring back to life and, but using it in a different way. So the, the concept, and I can let Tim Sheen speak to it or Tom if he's on, ready to talk about it, the concept is there's a, there's a building and somebody wants to, owns it or wants to have a repurpose and they need a little bit of seed money and they have a good business plan or whatever it may be, can come submit an application, say it's for a million dollars, they can submit an application and then to this group, the group will then vet the application, say, yeah, it's a good use, that's really what's needed, it fits ARPA on these categories and can make an award.
Okay, because what, here is the concern, is that the same old players will have access to these funds to buy these buildings, to repurpose them. And then the same folks that are struggling because they don't know how to do the business plan, blah, 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 don't have all that together, will miss out on that opportunity. So I just want to make sure that some of that fifteen million is either put aside or for some of the smaller minority owners that want to do more but can't because they don't have all these tools in place that are needed to give a great business plan. I have gotten many complaints about how things were running at economic development as far as being unfair. I don't know that for a fact, so I'm not being accusatory, but I have got some complaints and I think I brought it to Tim Sheen's attention before. But Tom, if you want to tell me a little bit about how the program will run, that would be great. And then I'll let Councilor Hurst and Councilor Allen ask their questions.
Uh, Counselor, thank you. I really don't have any more information than TJ said. I think that's my understanding as well, that they're building a program for people to be able to apply and receive money for a project that, that fits the bill of historic adaptive reuse. And I think they're trying to focus on projects that have housing elements and mixed-use elements. That's the, that's really the extent of what I understand what they're doing on that program. The question, I think it's worth following up with Echo Dev. They probably have a lot more details, either Brian Connors or Tim Sheen on that front.
All right, I will follow up with them just to make sure. And Councilor Hurst?
Yeah, my only question was whether TJ, we're backfilling for these individuals who are taking on new roles. I know Attorney Moore has a new role, I also know Che has what appears to be a new role. Are folks doing double duty or are we backfilling for their positions?
So the answer is yes, we're backfilling the positions for those that are needed because the work didn't go away in the REO, the work didn't go away at environmental reviews that Che was doing. We affectionately joke that unless you're doing three jobs, you're not working hard enough for the city of Springfield. And that's kind of by the way I feel about Che, Tom, myself, Lindsay and the rest of the team is, you know, this is a big, big lift and a big project and everything else. But we're currently looking to backfill all the work that Che's unit did prior to his promotion.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Hurst. And Councilor Allen, before you ask your question, Chad, I have a question for you. Do you only help with technical assistance for businesses or will you do it for individual households, seniors and all that? I've been getting calls from seniors that the, the application is just so cumbersome. They, they give up.
Gotcha, gotcha. I, I've really just been fielding the small business calls recently because those are the first ones that have been coming back that have went out. But I, I guess I can, I guess that's something that the ARPA team has to discuss and how we'll have to divvy that up or put that in my lap. But I, I guess that's something that we'll have to speak about.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to add to that, so guys, that's part of the reason. So I want to announce who, who we are hiring for the senior project manager yet until he's give proper notice to his organization. But I also, that's why I think I want two other compliance project managers is to help with the workload getting out because I've heard the same thing. It's the residents, seniors, housing, all those ones that, you know, they need some handholding and that's what we're wanting. That's really where the rubber meets the road and that's really where the most impact is gonna be for our residents.
I was just gonna add to that. I, I have regular interactions with people in the household front, the small business front, new business front, nonprofit front, senior front in the handheld leaving category. So I'm spending a good portion of my day kind of answering questions, getting back to people, explaining, clarifying and apologizing. Doing a combination of those things. But I will say, I'm optimistic in the last two weeks. We've gotten more household than senior applications. So we've gotten sort of a a group of those starting to come in on a regular basis. So that's very encouraging. That being said, I think we have good improvements that we're making that are, that are gonna improve the process and, you know, all, all criticisms are worth discussing because they can help improve the process. So we've been listening for sure over the last sixty days of the program and, you know, we're hopefully gonna make a nice pivot and make it easier for people. But yeah, there has been pretty regular communication upfront and I think TJ and Chair are both right. It's really a question of, if we had a couple more, you know, staff dedicated, we'd be able to really turn them around much faster. And I think that's one of the things we're running into.
And to piggyback off Attorney Moore's point, we, on the webinar on January twelfth, we had a, a good percentage of the people in the, probably about fifty participants. And there were a good portion of questions that were on the household front and not so much on the senior front, but there were senior questions. We had more so on the household front, so.
Yeah, that's good. Because I think the most question I'm getting is how to relay it back to COVID, like how to tie it back. And some of the, I don't know if you guys updated the application yet, but some of the things that shouldn't be a mandatory requirement, like tax returns, I keep saying that, certifications because some people are not required to file. I just wanted to know if that been updated yet? And I think I had asked for that to be updated before.
Yeah, Counselor, that's, that's definitely something we're fixing. That's been fixed in the revised draft. They haven't posted yet. I think we're hoping to get that done in the next day or two. You know, it's really, I said this in the webinar and I don't want to, you know, make an excuse for the timeline because, you know, we always want to get things out as quickly as we can with, with the nature of what we're doing here. But the final rule, which came out from Treasury Department, sort of threw us in a bit of a different direction because now we have to make sure with the final rule, you know, instead of the interim rule, we really have to make sure our applications are compliant and we thankfully can make some improvements and adjustments to make it much easier. And I think, Counselor, you're right. A lot of those tax forms and stuff, we're just gonna do away with and, and ask for some information maybe in the backend when we're going to sign a grant contract to make it a little easier for people just to get their applications in the door. But in addition to that, I think there's a number of improvements specifically to the impact section where we're gonna make it a lot easier for people with the way the final rule's been written. There's a number of of groups that are, that are basically assumed automatically to have suffered a significant impact. And that's gonna make it a lot easier for us to qualify people. So I'm very excited about, like encouraged about what they wrote and what they gave about ten days ago in that category. So we're gonna be, the revised applications are gonna reflect all of that. So you're gonna see, I think, a much more streamlined version of these things and they're gonna be, it's gonna be easier for people when they're looking to establish their impacts from COVID to do so. And a lot of the ones we've gotten in the door already, you know, Che and I are working with and our team to, to, to get people to the finish line, but also to then explain, you know, this regulation just came out. I know you applied in late November or December. But it, you know, in January, this new rule came out that makes it easier for you to get the money. And I think we can actually get a lot more people through the door now. So it's good. If it was a good improvement, I'm very, like I said, encouraged with what the Treasury Department issued.
Can you please share that rule with the council?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll send it out to the, all the council, right? Because Tom is a hundred percent correct. The final rule is way more detailed and-
It's larger. It's, it's like a four hundred thirty-page document, to be fair. It's just, the interim rule is about a hundred pages. You can find summary stuff online. You can find summary stuff.
Okay. I'm not reading for a hundred pages.
It's lengthy, but it's, a lot of it is good for us, I think. A lot of it I saw is very positive for Springfield.
Okay, thank you for joining, Councilwoman Govan. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Tracy. So I just need a, a explanation, a couple of things that just came up, TJ or Lindsay or whomever. So when you said earlier that you were hiring two program managers or senior project managers or something, I wasn't sure what that was for, but now I'm assuming that's for the review of the ARPA applications and things like that?
Mostly it's gonna be for helping residents and small businesses and nonprofits get their, go from just submitting it to crossing the finish line to hopefully get an award. Right now, it's just Che and Tom meeting with small businesses. And Tom's doing a little bit of the household stuff now by virtue of it's coming in. But we need at least three more people to help do that, but get it done and then get it across the city and get, start making some serious headway in it, so.
Yep, okay, I understand. And that, and those people, yeah, I got, I kind of figured it out as the meeting went on and, and Tom was talking about the, the process, et cetera, and Che. So those people, when they're hired, they will hit the salary line that you were just reporting on before. They'll be part of the ARPA funding salary line?
Yes, and we will actually, we'll provide a budget once we know who's hired and how much we're paying them and we'll have an actual budget. You'll see you know, set up as budgeted, then spent and then remaining balance.
Okay, and I assume, I mean, there's a lot of money, you know, some's been spent, there's a lot of money. You're assuming that there, there will be a volume of applications to review, et cetera. Are you getting a sense that that's the case, once people figure out how to do it?
Yes, we actually are anticipating once, so I think we're getting close to do another eight to ten small businesses and a few nonprofits next week sometime. And then once we get out the household ones, we think we're gonna get a deluge of applications. When people realize the money's real and the, and as Tom alluded to, the final rule from Treasury is a lot more forgiving on some of that stuff. It's gonna make it a lot easier for us to get moving.
That's good.
As we fly it. I mean, I just want to remind everyone that we're trying to figure it all out and like everybody else and build it as we fly it, but we're, we're doing our best to make sure as much resources get out to the community as possible.
Yep, no, that's good. So, so five have been given out and I assume you have a a tracking mechanism and some benchmarks or whatever that people have to live up to.
Yeah, we have a full database of all applications and we're there on the process, one is being awarded. We have contract, grant contracts that we'll enter in that talks about, you get fifty percent of your allocation then, and then we'll give you another fifty percent upon demonstration of, you know, progress towards stated goals. And then we'll track all that. And we track all the graphics, we track all all that information that will help us with reporting, not only to the city council, but back to the federal government.
Okay, good, okay, good. That's great. My other line of questioning is just with regard to Che's department and Compliance Department. I've been on the REO for, I don't know, not as long as Melvin, but six years, seven years. And, you know, we've seen that we, we depend on the Compliance Department, Che's operation. And with him getting this additional responsibility, you know, recently we lost Theo and we lost Hope. I believe Hope has another position now. So I, I think you spoke to it earlier in the meeting, but is there a hiring plan there to make sure that compliance is up to speed?
Yes, so as soon as, as, I think around February twenty-first, our candidate will be starting for the city of Springfield. And we'll be able to, he'll be backfilling Che's old position. And then we're gonna be hiring those other two. So we made an offer to, to a candidate, he is accepted. He is just, we need to, he needs to give his notice before I announce who it is. I think the council and the city are gonna be excited to hear his vision on compliance and some of the work he's done for the last twenty years, so. I'll just do that as a teaser.
All right, so that's, that's good. I'm sufficiently teased. And Che, so Che will not be in charge of compliance much longer. And is that what I'm getting from this?
Oh, Che is gonna be the director and the senior project manager is gonna be under Che as well as the project managers.
Okay, all right, so Che will be in both places. All right, that's fine. Good, glad you got somebody coming because we've made a lot of progress in the REO and want to keep it that way. So thank you. That's it. That's my questions. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hurst?
Just quickly, what have we spent on advertising?
Sorry, you broke up, Counselor. Could you repeat the question?
What have we spent on advertising?
Advertising, we have not spent a ton yet because we just put together a media plan that was blessed by the mayor yesterday, I believe, Tom. And so I can pull together a budget number for what we're looking to do. And I can present the media plan when we're fully ready, but it is, I know we've been talking about it for a while, but it's finally coming close. Tom, I don't know if you have any more updates on that?
Yeah, we did, we did some work today with television stuff that's gonna be ready to go, I think, within a week or so. We have a bunch of radio stuff that we're hoping to roll out. And like TJ said, we can get you a more comprehensive breakdown that just like a simple, you know, one-page thing, it'll show you everything and the costs associated. We have a pretty decent budget for it, like we talked about, trying to cover periodicals, radio, television and, and local, you know, advertising to the, to the best extent possible. So yeah, we, we, we can get that information to, and we, we're definitely advancing that today. Or was, yeah, today we did the, the commercial work with TV. So it's, it's rolling along. It's an interesting, it's an interesting task, doing the rate stuff and figuring all that out between radio and television. It's a world that I'm not very familiar with, but gotten an education, so.
Okay, that's good to hear. Because if people don't know about this money, then they can't take advantage of it, especially when we're talking about communities that have been disproportionately impacted. So I'd love to have that planned. Second thing is that we're looking at this breakdown. If we could also on a monthly basis be provided with the breakdown of where this two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars is obligated for, what categories? That would be extremely helpful. In addition, it would be nice to know the number of applications that are in the pipeline for each area. Just to see what the interest is and how many people are reaching in each of the categories. So to the extent that we do that, that would be helpful. And if we could also get demographic information for each of the categories and applications that are in the pipeline, if that is possible. Or at the very least, for the monies that are obligated, that would be helpful as well, just in terms of, you know, us, when I do diligence, make sure those individuals who ought to benefit from this funding are actually benefiting. And then lastly, more of a recommendation, if you all are not thinking about it already. I know there are some organizations, Tiffany and one of them on the call were actually walking folks through completing this application. I don't know if we've thought about investing monies into those organizations that are outside of, that are not city-led, where folks might feel more comfortable in attending and, and getting that sort of tutoring to fill out these applications, but we ought because you guys can't necessarily utilize the new positions that you're creating. But we, we ought, um, because you guys can't necessarily utilize the new positions that you're creating if you don't get the applications in there.
So, thank you. Uh, so let me address the quest. So, certainly we can break out the, uh, categories, and we will break out in the memo going forward when there's other nonprofits housing and, uh, any of the other categories. The second thing I can commit to is a monthly memo of awards and the demographic information of those awards and what's in the pipeline, uh, to kind of coincide with this. And maybe it won't be with this directly, but maybe it'll be, if it's every other week, it'll be off weeks or something. I don't know. We can, we can talk about that. Uh, but I think reporting out, uh, the demographics is a great story to tell so far of what I've seen and what we've been able to work through. Uh, and I think it is important for the council to see, uh, the process and see what we're kind of doing. The, the last part of your recommendation slash question, I'm intrigued. Um, I know we've talked, we spoke internally about whether or not there are organizations out there that can, uh, provide hands-on assistance, um, that are not necessarily city employees. Um, and I'm intrigued to have that conversation further.
Great. Thank you, TJ. I, I appreciate that because Justin just stole what I was gonna say. Um, that Tiffany is working with Berkshire Bank and, um, VVM, I think. She'll talk about that, but she held a session where she's helping folks in, in four different, uh, at four different times with the same participants, go through the whole application process. And actually, she do it again. I wanna go through it and have some, um, folks go through it as well. But it'd be good if she has some, um, a little bit of training on the city side, if possible, to help and also contract, um, with Berkshire Bank, um, to offer these services. Cause I think right now she's doing all the kindness of her heart, and it's still time consuming as she has a family. And then, before I pass it to Counselor Letterman, my other question is, and from what I've heard, is there's other departments that has asked for certain ARPA funding monies, and some may be awarded to departments. And I wanna make sure that this money, I know that these departments wanna help folks impacted by COVID and things like that, but I want to make sure that a portion of the funds that's left, cause I know it's less than eighty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, eighty-seven million dollars is left, but a portion of that is specifically set aside for the communities that was most impacted by COVID nineteen. And so, if you can answer that, I've heard there's some magical list of different departments asking for funding, and I don't wanna be surprised by, we're taking some more ARPA funds and putting it into this pocket for this department, that department, and that department.
So, the short answer is, we did put out to department heads to submit their departmental needs based upon the impact of COVID. We've gotten some back with some requests, some are, you know, logical, some are not necessarily the best fit. Uh, having said that, um, the new final rule, the final treasury rule, allows us to kind of look at neighborhoods that have been, uh, impacted disproportionately by COVID. And we've had internal conversations about setting aside a pot of money to address a lot of that. I don't have a number yet. I, I don't wanna sit, commit to a number, but now that we have the new rule we're working through, the final rule we're working through, it makes it, it allows us to have a little more flexibility to address needs in specific neighborhoods.
Cause one thing you said early on is this money is gonna go fast, and that is proving to be right. And so, we just wanna make sure that folks that really need it, mostly impacted by it, are, have the opportunity to get the funds before it's like dispersed to different departments. And then it's in other people's hands. That's gonna have to come to the meeting, cause we wanna know what everybody's doing. But, um, so thank you for that. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing that, uh, caught my ear while you were describing the marketing plan TJ is, uh, and Tom, uh, is I didn't hear you say anything about social media. And I think it's, I think it's essential that you market on social media, especially with regard to, uh, being able to get in touch with, uh, younger individuals and individuals who aren't, uh, traditionally or haven't traditionally been engaged with these types of programs through the city. And I, and then to that point, I think it's important that you contract with an individual, uh, who knows how to set up that social media marketing, because it can be done in very intentional ways, uh, to actually reach the exact demographic of folks that, that need to be reached. Uh, so I'm wondering, uh, if you have plans for that, and if you don't, uh, I strongly encourage you to develop them. Uh, so that's my first question, and then I have one, one other question after you answer that.
All right, so Counselor Letterman, thanks for the question. Uh, yes, the short answer is we are working on a social media, um, you know, uh, strategy, and that part of that is to do, be very intentional on getting information to the demographics and the neighborhoods and the census tracts and all of that that we need to get to. And we've been focusing on that. Uh, and I think that'll become a little clearer when we present the media strategy.
Yeah, Counselor, I, I left that out mistakenly. I'm an old man, and I didn't even think about the internet or the information superhighway, as they call it.
You are not old.
That's my fault. Yeah, no, that, that is part of it. I should've mentioned that. I didn't even think of it, cause I'm thinking of like old-timey newspaper ads and stuff like that. But go ahead, sorry.
Gotcha. So, short answer is, and if, if we need to make it more robust, we can make it more robust, but, uh, we do it weird.
Right. I mean, it needs to include, I mean, it needs to include paid, you know, it needs to include a, a paid strategy. I mean, right, I mean, we can't just create-
And it will, and it will.
Yeah. We can't just create like a light the ARPA page and see what happens. I mean, you need, you know, you need a, you need a-
No, 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 no. This is intentional. It, it'll be intentionally targeted, and it will be someone that knows what they're doing. And you don't, you don't trust Tom and I to do social media. We're not good at it.
So, my, my second question is, um, relative to the technical assistance and the new positions that are coming on board. You know, you've mentioned them being used for, uh, moving folks from the application stage into the award stage. Um, but si- similarly to my colleague before me, I haven't heard too much about getting people into the application stage, because I agree that it can be intimidating, uh, for a, a lot of folks in all the, across the categories. So, what, what's the plan for that type of assistance? Um, similar to, you know, what Tiffany is doing? What, what's the plan there?
So, uh, we've realized that Rebecca Johnson and, uh, the, oh, the online version that we're supposed to be at, like in Brightwood, were tremendously helpful to get out into the community. And, uh, our plan is to get out in the community and get into the organizations and groups that need to have, um, better, um, presentation or, uh, how-tos or, or of it, so that they know. And, and to make it less intimidating is what, you know, the new updated, uh, RFPs will reflect. But, uh, it's something we know we gotta get out there a little bit more, and once we're fully staffed, we'll be able to do that better, uh, than just having it the way it's been, so.
Hey, Counselor, too, I, I'll add, um, I, I mean, I am doing that on a daily basis. So, I think it's, it's also a question of, you know, when we're staffing up, that there'll be, you know, some work efforts put towards that piece of it as well. You know, it's, it's a lot of handholding, and it's a lot of people who have been reaching out, um, saying they just flat-out need help with the application, and then I directly work with them. And I'm not writing anybody's application, and, and, you know, we're not able to do that, but I'm able to give people enough information and clarify things for them and give them some, uh, concept of what's being looked for, to be able to get them to, to complete their applications. And, you know, that's been an ongoing process literally every day of this job. So, um, to the extent that we can expand that effort, that's something that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, but we are doing that already. So, um, it's just a question of, um, being able to turn around applications and, and, and sit down with people and talk to them, you know, and, and any given day, you know, I'm meeting with, uh, two small businesses and, and a household and, and a new business. And it's, it's just, you know, it's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of legwork. It's a lot of, uh, you know, going through the basics of what, what it, what it means to, um, to fill out certain parts of the application, uh, what it, what it means when we're, we're looking for certain pieces of information, and ultimately, what their responsibilities will be should they get the money, and how they're going to, um, have to report on the, the funds and how we're gonna help them do that. And, uh, you know, it's a lengthy discussion. So, every one of these meetings is not something that someone can sit down and say, twenty minutes I can get somebody to the finish line. You know, that's just not even close to reality. So, um, you know, w- 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 we anticipate, as TJ very correctly said, an, an onslaught of applications, uh, after we've gotten our full media, um, advertising campaign off the ground, and after people realize that the household money is being awarded and the money is very real. Uh, and at that point, we, you know, we hope to be staffed up, but we do not, um, control the, the, the job market. We, we, we've been doing as, as best work as we can to get people, um, in the door who are applying. But, um, you know, the city's short lifeguards to lawyers, as the joke goes, and that's just true. So, you know, just figured I'd give that for extra information.
Right. Well, I'll look forward to seeing that, that formalized, and I know, I know Tiffany's in the queue, so I, I'm looking forward to hearing from her as well, cause I think she can provide some valuable insight, uh, into what's needed.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. And with that said, I will give, um, Tiffany the floor. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for the conversation that we had. You gave me a lot of insight that I definitely appreciate. I kinda was aware, but, um, you gave me a lot more insight than what I known, so I just wanted you to share, um, some of the details with the rest of the council and with the, um, staff at City Hall.
Um, thank you so much.
And just tell us a little bit about yourself and, um, how you're helping with the process.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me. Um, I'm gonna turn off my video, because I think my signal is weak. Um, so, excuse me for that. First and foremost, I just wanna thank every single person that is on this call and recognize the fact that it is extraordinarily difficult to adhere to local, state, and federal guidelines, um, especially for a program that is going to be accessible for the entire community. So, um, as a community member, we definitely appreciate the work you're doing and understand its complexity. Um, that being said, um, my name is Tiffany Lee, I'm the founder of Black and Brown Wall Street, and I work to help strengthen, um, economy of Springfield specifically for the black and brown community. That being said, we were extraordinarily excited, um, when the ARPA program was released. Um, since it's, uh, been released, we kind of lessened our excitement, and I'm gonna give you a couple of reasons, um, why, without going over the issues with application, because there's a new one coming out. Um, there's a lot of other things that's playing a role.
Breaking up Tiffany a little bit. I don't know if you could move to the side a little bit, or?
I'll try. Um, can these, is that any better?
Yeah, that's a little better. Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So, what I was saying was that, um, uh, one of the biggest issues is that, uh, technical assistance and what, uh, the definition of it is skewed comparatively. Speaking between what is being produced by the city and then what the committee is requesting. Um, like Attorney Moore had alluded to, it's a lot more, the need is much greater than just saying, hey, these are the different elements of the application. I need to find them for you, and you go and create it yourself. Majority of that place to be able to get, um, single questions answered about the, um, application, and then be able to complete it successfully. So, um, what we did with that issue was, um, we built a program based off of the application that you guys provided, um, sponsored by Senator Gomez, to try to, um, make a more efficient process and helping navigate this huge issue for a lot of our community. And so, we designed an accelerator application program, which involves four sessions, um, and they're two hours each. We start at the beginning by building a strategic plan and outline. And, um, then we move into education on how to develop a strong business plan. Um, and the business plan is designed itself to meet the requirements of the application. So, that includes experience and stability, um, community partners, uh, community benefits and leveraging partnerships, and all of those as well. Um, we then create a first draft, and then we outline it with the second draft. We've completed the first three sessions. Next week, we're doing our final session, which involves one-to-one and small, um, group technical assistance with, um, various professional service members in the community. Um, but that being said, the businesses that were able to attend, uh, our ARPA workshops were still not the businesses with the greatest needs and was, um, with the most drastic impact of COVID. There is definitely a clear line of privilege in terms of who can access and who can complete these applications versus who can't. Um, and in terms of, it's been repeated a couple of times, so I just have to address the idea that, um, it's not an issue of people not believing the money is real. It's people not believing that the money is for them, or they're gonna be awarded, or they're gonna be able to access it. And with the intimidating application, um, it, it cements it as well. So, we very much know that the, the money is real. We've seen it being spent since last summer. We just know that it's not being spent on us. Um, there is also concerns regarding, um, the fact that it, uh, Springfield received the money in an eligibility-type situation, so based off of the community black grant rule and our demographics. Um, and it was four pieces of information. It's still all up there on the US Department of Treasury Department, um, website. Um, and then we turn around and have six pages of that. That being said, um, I'm also familiar with the, both the interim rule and the final rule. And while I do agree that the final rule is extraordinarily more detailed, the elements of what the money was going towards have been there since the interim rule and since the original American Rescue, um, policy that came out last March. So, i- it's disheartening to hear that it's the idea that, um, we didn't have enough information to support it, because we were a part of these conversations last summer, um, when, under the leadership of Attorney Moore, had connected with so many different parts of our community. So, you guys did a good, like an amazing job in terms of really getting into the community, talking to different stakeholders. So, a lot of people know about this money, and a lot of people know that it exists, and that's why Tracy and everyone is getting so many phone calls, because we know it's there. We just, we just don't know how to access it. So, in terms of, um, uh, the capacity of the departments that you're describing, um, we're so glad that there's gonna be more people there. But like Attorney Moore said, they're not going to be able to spend eight hours with one business to build, uh, their ARPA application or support them in building it. And with the different rules that's within the guidelines itself, describing, um, the, the, the real thin line it takes, uh, to, in terms of communicating with the, both the advisory council and the evaluation, um, team that comes beforehand. It doesn't seem sustainable to have you guys who are also a part of the evaluation system doing all the technical assistance. Um, that being said, uh, Councilwoman Tracy alluded to the partnership that I've created between Berkshire Bank and Valley Venture Mentors, and, um, we were actually able to do it because of you guys at the city of Springfield, because of, um, the fact that Valley Venture Mentors already has a contract with, um, EcoDev and, um, another technical assistance department within that realm. And so, they were able to help us support building that program for free for the community, because technical assistance from the city of Springfield is already funding it. So, um, that model really worked. We put out, uh, a registration in December. In forty-eight hours, we wanted twenty, we wanted twenty businesses, and in forty-eight hours, we had over thirty businesses. We have a waitlist for our next cohort, which is going to be in February, um, on Thursdays. And in March, we're trying to do it on a weekend day. Um, there's a lot of businesses that need support. We just have to keep managing the COVID, uh, uh, risk and guidelines, so we're not gonna stuff VVM, even though it's an auditorium-sized place. But in terms of the need being there, and I'll just stop right there, so you can have, just in case there are questions. Um, I have, uh, worked with, I think it's over sixty businesses now, um, in terms of assisting and answering questions, and then doing individual consultations, um, to help them build out the different aspects of their businesses. And I guess the conclusion, conclusive statement is, um, the, we have a lot of strong and, um, dynamic businesses in our community that, um, wanna do just that, the business part of it, the creative part of it, whatever their passion is. Um, in terms of the grant-writing experience, it's extraordinary lackluster. So, trying to create something that's sustainable for the next two years or until the money fa- um, runs dry, um, that's where we're at in terms of figuring out, how do we get all these businesses that we know are eligible, um, to be able to complete it in a efficient way? Because at the point we're doing it now, um, it's almost like we're gonna have the money for a full year, a full calendar year, and, um, less, a very minute percentage of the city would even see it. So, that's kind of where we're at as a community. Less, a very minute percentage of the city would even see it. So, that's kinda where we're at as a community. And if Councilwoman Wolf wanted me to ask, answer any specific questions, I am more than happy to.
I have a specific question, Tiffany, and thank you for your service to the community. Thank you to VVM. I didn't know about the partnership. It's a lot of contracted partnerships with the city of Springfield and organizations. That we don't know about, and that's the next thing I'm gonna be working on, because we should know what our partnerships are, and also who's always getting awarded these contracts. Not, knock at VVM, but it's something that we should know, because there's a lot of organizations who could probably offer. The same type of services, but don't know about some, the opportunities to contract with the city of Springfield in order to do so. So, I definitely appreciate you bringing that to the forefront, because I'm going to dig into contracts next. Just giving you a heads up, TJ. And finance team. Tiffany, my question is, it's great that you're helping with the applications. Will the. Relationship continue when it's time to report? Because if they don't know how to fill out the applications, they're not gonna know how to report on them. And so, is that relationship gonna continue? Do you need, do VVM have funding for it? Will additional funding be needed?
So, yeah, that support is definitely gonna continue. That was one of our major concerns. But again, I do want to go back to Attorney Moore's leadership, where back in the summer before any applications was out. He explained that there's gonna be a lot of marketing around the reporting times, and he's gonna be using social media. So, there's gonna be stuff coming out of the recovery department, but we're also gonna be pressing for that. So, Black and Brown Wall Street is tracking all of the businesses that we're working with, and we're building our own reminders and things of that nature. That has general information right now that we're gonna be able to put the details in when they come out from the department. I wanna go back to your comment about VVM real quick, and then I'll finish that idea. So, VVM has a blanket technical assistance contract where they're supposed to be servicing. I think they receive a hundred thousand dollars a year. They do, they connect on both the Rise Up Program that Springfield EconDev does. But then, that was it, because they don't actually have any continuous technical assistance efforts. Which is why, under the leadership of Hope, she was like, well Tiffany, we see you doing the free webinars. This is the greatest need right now. Instead of us making something up, can you just do this? And so, I don't receive any pay for it as of now, because I'm not under, I'm not contracted with the city, and so. VVM is going through a lot of transitions, but it was still essential that we utilize their platform for our community, so at least they could benefit from it. In terms of the support.
Wait, so you don't get paid for it, but they got a hundred thousand dollar contract? But you're not getting paid to offer the technical assistance that they got the contract for? So, what is the money used for? And I don't know if you know that, I'm not putting you on the spot, but do you, do you know what the money is being used for?
So, I, two things I know in terms of the. Facilitation, like VVM is responsible of facilitating portions of that Rise Up Program, so I know a salary. A smaller salary goes to whoever that facilitator is. In terms of dollar amounts that I can tell you on writing that they are using it for, I can't, but in terms of. I, the ARPA Accelerator Program, I haven't had to pay for anything using VVM. So, that means those eight hours that were in that space that cost money. Where I'm sure that that's going towards that, all the bandwidth and the internet that all those, I think twenty-five businesses are using, is going to that. All the copies I've made at VVM has been for free, so there's definitely money going towards it. I just. I'm not, I don't work for them, so I wouldn't know the specifics of that.
And I know TJ gotta jump off, but TJ, do you know if that money is CDBG that VVM gets for the technical writing?
I would have to look into it. I'm not, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of the grant that VVM got, so I'll have to look into it.
Okay, thank you, because I would like those details. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot. I don't care how much papers get copied. This is not a hundred thousand dollars, or Counselor Hurst. And TJ, I understand if you have to leave at five forty-five. Thank you for attending, and everybody that was able to attend today. You're muted, Counselor.
It hasn't happened in a while. Agreed, and Tiffany, thank you for all that you do, and you deserve to be. Compensated for all of your work, and you know, the community appreciates what it is that you're doing as well. The only thing that I would say in terms of really investing in these types of programs. Is that I would try to base the funding off of results. I think at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that these businesses are receiving this money. And one of the things that I don't wanna see us do is start investing in organizations that aren't necessarily producing. So, in the event that we do give these monies out, we need to make sure that we monitor. Who are actually getting these businesses to the finish line. So, I certainly have every confidence in yourself. Tiffany, and I think you're playing a vital role, but just as we move forward, if we could just keep that in mind. You know, I think we certainly strengthen, whatever it is that we're trying to do. You know, to get these businesses where we want them to be.
I'm gonna agree to disagree a little bit on that, because regardless of the results. They could be getting a hundred percent of the nothing that they're doing by submitting nothing, or they could. But now they have something at least to submit to Che and Tom, where they could say, this part of the application is great, but this part needs some work. And we don't know what the results are gonna be for a long time, and so to keep having these facilitated sessions, that's why my suggestion would be. To go and get some training with Tom and Che, and then. You'll have a more clear understanding as to what they're looking for, and then offer you sessions, but. You're still out there doing this work, and anybody that's doing work needs to be compensated. I'm compensated for being a city councilor. They're compensated for doing their job. And I'm doing community service work too. This is community service work, you know, this is taken away from my family. And, and anytime that I have to take away from my family. I think that we gotta get into the mind frame as black and brown people, that we need to be compensated for the work that we do in the community. We love our community and we try, but we also need to be compensated. So, I agree, we need results. But I also agree, people should be paid for the time and the effort that they put into this, and I think that it can be a very successful program. Tom and Che don't have eight hours a day. Tiffany is committing these type of hours a week. And so, the, if we can, like, help build that program, I think that we should. But that's just my opinion. I don't control the money, Tiffany, but I will fight for it. So, Tiffany, I know you wanted to respond, and then I'll turn it over to Councilwoman, Govan.
Okay, thank you again. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, that I'm worried about, just being engaged with these. Applications these last, since they came out on November first, or since they've been accepted on November first, is I'm worried about. The, how can I put this? The balance between. Okay, so two things that are happening that I've noticed. Is that there are the batch, the groups of people who are doing way too much and stressed up, stressed out, exhausted. Over the application, and they could have turned in a quality application in November, but they feel like they haven't meet the requirements yet. So, they're just building it and adding more and adding more, and then on the other spectrum of things, there are those who understand that. Can't be denied, you can only be redirected, so they're just putting anything together, just so they can get connected to technical assistance. So, I'm worried that on my end, the variety of people building programs might be putting too much, too much stresses on businesses. To create these phenomenal applications when it should be just the simple, technically you should be able to fill it out in pen and get money. Based off of the format of it. I mean, and then the other end of people, us giving you guys an influx of applications. And then you not having the cap, capacity to manage it, and then the money is stuck either way. So, that's a major concern that I don't know if it's being addressed at this point. And trying to figure that out before we end up having a department where the money is stuck anyway, even though now the applications are finally coming in.
Thank you for sharing that with us, and I hope all that Tom and Che and the team will go back and discuss. What are, all the things that you're saying, because it is important, so thank you for that. Councilwoman. Can't hear you, Zeta, but it doesn't look like you're muted, though. Turn, can you turn your volume up? So, while she's working on that, my question was, how? How long from the application time is the money awarded, or the funds are awarded? Like, when you guys sent out that press release that these are the awarded applicants, how long does it take for them to actually receive their first payout?
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to say, Counselor Govan, if you wanted to just type it into the chat, whatever your question was, if your microphone isn't working.
Thank you.
Attorney Moore queued up.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, so I think it's dependent on each awardee, so by the, when the award. Goes out and gets announced, and they get the letter saying congratulations, and hopefully we'll be sending many, many of those letters. There's a couple steps left, right? We gotta show you the grant contract, get you understanding what it means and what your obligations are, and you know. We have a meeting where we sit down face to face and spend quite a bit of time going through that with the awardees. There's also some of the applications, when they get to the award stage, they still haven't given us certain things they need to give us. So, there's forms like conflict of interest forms and debarment forms, stuff that's like state required, but not necessarily anything. Anybody would need to be worried about filling out, but that's all backend stuff. So, we sit down with them, we take care of that, and then there's really the idea that a lot of times the award. Application, I'm sorry, the proposal will contain, you know, a budget that's. Good enough for us to get them to the award stage, but it's not good enough for our contract. So, I'll sit down with them and individually go over and help them fix their budget to make it a true contractual budget, and I type it up, or if we need to. Put it into the contract that way. So, it takes some, some of them took a little bit longer than the others to get to the signing point. But once you get this contract to the signature point, it's like ten days till a check is cut to somebody's hand, so it's pretty, pretty quick. Getting it from the award to the signature stage, probably like two to three weeks. So, I think the money should be going out to everybody who got the awards, either this week or next week. It's gotta be, it's gotta be soon. Because I know that, I know that the signatures process has already started taking place, so they're probably gonna get the money within the next week or two.
Oh, great.
But I, you know, and those are the first five awards, so as I, you guys are probably sick of me saying, and I say it because I believe it's true, and it will, it will be true. We will get better, and we're gonna get faster, and it's just, yes, there will be a higher volume, and that is, that is a problem we're working on. And we'll get, but we'll get there with the speed of it, and I think you'll see, like, I think I said this quite a bit, and early on. I think the process really is only like a three to four week evaluation award process. It's not that long. If we had. Enough staff people, and if we, if we iron out the wrinkles that we know are there, I think we'll get to that mark. So, but yeah, once you get awarded, it's probably like a two to three week process where we get everything nailed down, you sign a contract, and the money goes out.
Just real quick, I gotta hop off, but I wanted to answer Counselor Govan's question. We will be. Reaching out to contact you. I'll probably be reaching out to you personally, or Attorney Moore, to schedule a time where we can come out to the orchard. So, that will be coming soon. There's a lot going on, obviously, COVID and doing things. In person is much more advantageous than a webinar or virtual. However, we have to go with the tools that are necessary for the day right now. So, we wanted to do in person, and we will definitely be contacting you soon about coming out to the orchard.
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, we hear you.
So, another question, a lot of residents out here are asking about the income. Is there an income level that people have to meet, the residents' individual applications? Is there income limits? Do people have to be low income?
It's a good question, and this question comes in a lot, and what I'll say is, no, you do not. There's no, there's no set limit. Bye, Che, see ya.
Thanks, Che.
There's, there's no set limit for the income. What it does is, is ARPA cleverly. Decided that they were gonna expand some of the income limit pieces that they had, I think originally thought of in the interim rule. So, they're allowing low income, moderate income to be defined in a little bit more of a broader, broader sense. So, it incorporates more people, but it also doesn't exclude people outside of that range. What it does is it just makes it so that you have to really establish an impact, and establish how you're connecting your use of the money to the impact. And it does allow for people to get the money, even if you're not in a low income category. It does, however, stress that the money's really designed to go to the hardest hit populations, and you know, we're talking about minority populations, low income populations. A lot of, you know, ARPA spells out specifically where that goes, but that's. We're trying to make the program design that way. Our numbers are very, very encouraging on that front, so I think it's doing what we're hoping it was gonna do. It's just, I gave this analogy, and I'm typically remember the, the fire hose analogy, where you're like, you gotta, it's gotta be water that comes out at an even pace. It can't be a blast or a trickle, and we're just, right now, we're at a trickle, and it's not where I wanna be. But it's not gonna be like that for much longer, and I think we will get to the point where it's a nice steady flow. But, you know, as was very accurately described today, it's a, it's a challenge. It's a really, it's a real time challenge and effort challenge, and every, everybody helping is super appreciated, and you know. I wish I had more hours in my day to do this work, because you know, we're getting things done, but it's just. Gosh, I wish we could get them a lot faster.
Do you have your own budget, Tom?
I think the finance department has Che's and my department's budget somewhere. I, it's really sort of undefined at the moment, because we're sort of, we're not sure how many staff total will come on, so I don't think they have an exact, like staffing projection yet. I don't know, like, like nothing, bold stuff like paper and staples and things like that. I don't have anything signed up. I think that's just stuff from the finance department that's already built in, so I, I really don't know what the overall budget of the department would look like. At the moment, it's sort of like, let's get the staffing on board that we know we need, and then let's look at what, you know, if we need hardware and stuff like that, we'll see what we need. But a lot of it is just, like, was described tonight very accurately, just being able to meet with people and talk with them and get them where they need to go, and. So, we're hoping the staff is gonna really improve that, and our, of course, our relationships with third parties outside the city. I think that'll be a big improvement as well.
And I'm not gonna keep folks much longer. I know everybody got their families to get to, so I definitely appreciate you staying on longer. We usually try to keep these meetings to an hour. But this is so important to me, because I don't think that makes sense. You should have your own budget. That you oversee, and Che should have his own budget, that he oversees, like every other department has their own budgets that they oversee. And just from working in finance, when you forecast the department, there is a budget somewhere. Maybe you don't have access to it, which I think is a disservice to you, because I think you should have your own autonomy to contract with different individuals and organizations that you may need for help. I will put this in writing, Tom, so, and, and I know it always feels like you're getting the brunt of this burden, because everybody else leaves. But it's not, it's more meant to help you, because you shouldn't have to ask for everything that you need. You should have a budget. That you can go out and make decisions as the smart, brilliant, wonderful, open, honest attorney that you are and have always been in every role that I've known you in, okay?
I appreciate that, Counselor. I will say, I, I don't, it's not that I don't get what I'm looking for, I think it's.
I know you get what you're looking for, but you gotta ask, and it shouldn't be like that. You should have your budget that you oversee, and, because you're. Brilliant enough to handle it.
I think, I think, I agree with you. I want that, I want that. I think that it's just, at the moment, I'm not sure it's possible to get an exact thing down, and, and you know, like an exact budget. We're just, we're trying to build it. So, I think what we have, what we have the best now would be, how many staff do I need, and I've sort of given that information, and what does that, those staffing numbers look like for cost? That's really all the budget looks like at the moment, maybe advertising in there somewhere, right? And the information I got from, from my department was, spend whatever you think you need to spend for advertising. There is no, you know, spend what you need to spend, get this done the right way. It wasn't a question of me trying to ask for a certain amount of money, it was more like, do whatever we need to do. And, and you know, so that's, in that sense, like I said, it's, the resources I think are there for my department, but it is very vague and undefined, because it's very new. So, I'm, I agree with you. I wish I had like a really defined budget, and I sort of knew exactly every dollar that was coming into the department for what purpose. I think we'll get there. I just, it's not there yet, and that's a little, it's a little, you know.
I used to work in finance, right, Tom?
Yes.
You know that, that, I know that they have a template, and you know, or maybe you don't, that I know that they can give you that template. And you could do an estimate, you can even work with a finance analyst to help you estimate how much money you need for salaries, for wages, for personal services, which is consulting. For office supplies, for mileage, for marketing, for da-da-da-da, and so on and so forth. That's the template I'm talking about, that you should have specifically for your department, and Che should have one for his department, and you guys should be working with an analyst to figure out what that budget looks like. But that's not on you. I'm gonna call TJ, okay?
Understood.
Ask him why that, that's not happening, because you need to have some autonomy and some control over a department that you are assigned. To, you're assigned over, actually, to run, and it'll be a much better way. To me, it feels like I have to ask for things. I don't like that. Like, you're smart enough to run. Like, you're smart enough to run it, you're smart enough to do this, and I think you have so much integrity that I trust anything that you put forward, um, because you've never steer- steered me wrong on anything I ever asked you for. And I think that that's something that you need to be the great leader that you are. So I'm just saying that on a personal level. Um, because you, you could have the opportunity to maybe contract with a Tiffany or someone else without going, jumping through hoops. But that's a conversation I'll have with TJ. He's the CFO, and he, um, will have the final authority over that, but I will bring that up.
I appreciate it, Counselor. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we leave, and I let you guys go to your families? I love being with y'all, but, uh,
Thank you.
Gotta go. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany, for joining us. Thank you, counselors. Have a good night.
Thank you, Counselor.